Okay, Randy, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna get started. Welcome, everyone. We'd like to call this meeting to order. If everyone would stand and join me in the pledge. Council has their agenda before them. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda or are there changes?
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
No announcements. So, public comment this evening. I see that two of the public comments are in relation to the public hearing. Mr. Parr and Mr. Cantley. So, we will have a public comment period during that open, during that here, hearing, if you don't mind to hold off, okay? So, Mr. Michael Reisman, Reeceman. You'll step to the podium and introduce yourself. Also, the public hearing, okay, I couldn't quite read that, okay? Alright, so we'll just hold all those. Alright, we would like this evening to represent our Mills River Scholars. And this is a scholarship presented by the Fitzpatrick Foundation. Roger, you want to give any history on that?
No.
Alright. Okay. So, we would like to represent this year's winners. Cameron Holbert and Alexandra Bradlova. I apologize if I got that one wrong. Who is here with us tonight, Cameron?
There's also Lee Bradley, but he was not able to.
So, we have Cameron with us. Cameron, we want to present you with this certificate. And our congratulations.
Cameron, if you'd step forward. Sorry.
What are you studying, Cameron?
Oh, I'm just getting my, uh, major, I'm getting my major in, uh, science right now. While I try to decide what I want to do. I'm going to Blue Ridge right now.
Well, best of luck. Thank you. Alright, we will mail this certificate to the others soon.
Yes.
You've said the same thing every year. Okay. To the consent agenda. Are there any changes or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a quick comment about the minutes, if I could. I know that we, um, we usually just approve the minutes as part of the consent agenda in a pro forma kind of way. But I want to point out that these minutes are just a little bit unusual. They are unusual because at the end of the last meeting, we had a closed session. In the last paragraph, the minutes mentioned that a council member left that session without being excused. That's a nice way of saying that he stormed out in the middle, leaving four of us to do the work of five. It's the kind of thing that I have never, ever witnessed before on any of the boards that I've served on. As elected officials, we've agreed to put the community's needs above our own. We don't have the luxury of deciding that we're too tired, or we're grumpy, or we just want to go home. This councilman not only abandoned us when we needed his input. He walked away from the people of Mills River. This board, I have to say, has an excellent reputation. Throughout western North Carolina, as one of the best working boards that there are. Many times, other councilmen in other cities have told me that they're jealous of the way that we've worked together. This kind of behavior cannot be tolerated. I'm not willing to sacrifice that good reputation to soothe anyone's ego, bruised or otherwise. The council member in question must look inside his own heart. And I would suggest that he either step up and do the hard work, or step away from the board entirely. His actions will now be entered into the historical record. My comments are complete, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Consent agenda is a whole. Randy, did you say something?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Others in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Okay, to the regular agenda, we have item A is a public hearing on rezoning request for 598 Miles View Drive. But I will make a motion to enter into public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Others in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, staff will present first. Michael?
Yep. Good evening. So, on June 7th, the town received a rezoning request from the current property owner of 598 Miles View Drive. John Parr, the John Parr revocable trust. To rezone the property or request a rezoning of the property from its current designation of light industrial to Mills River Residential or the MR30 district. The property has about 15 acres and it's located behind the Pepsi and Amazon commercial operations towards the northeast corner of the town's jurisdiction. Just a quick background, couple highlights of the light industrial district, which is currently zoned, is designed to provide a place for industrial uses that are incompatible with general business areas of the town. And then the requested rezoning to MR30 residential, that district tended to be a quiet neighborhood consisting of single-family homes. As always, when this council approaches rezoning, it's important to consider all possible uses in the requested district, the MR30 district. Because once a property is rezoned, any use in the new district is permitted. Failure to consider all uses can be considered contract zoning, which is impermissible. So, staff's analysis, we look at the Making Mills River 2040 Comprehensive Plan and the Future Land Use Vision Map. And basically, we identified that this request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, which designates this property and all the surrounding properties to remain for industrial and employment use. The Future Land Use Map Table actually identifies residential development as not desirable in the area. And basically describes the employment and land use category, again, to keep these areas for, and it says, I quote, "These areas are intended to be reserved for non-residential employment oriented uses." Anytime you change the zoning or a zoning request is made to change from commercial or industrial to residential, it's considered a downzoning per state law. That's when you basically decrease the number of uses or the development density of the property. That's only permissible with the new Chapter 160D changes if the request is initiated by the property owner, which in this case it is, so downzoning would be permitted in this case. I don't know if you saw the maps in your packet, but basically, this property is requesting to be zoned differently from all the ones around it. Spot zoning comes into question anytime that situation comes up where you're rezoning a small tract of land differently from the ones around it. And that's legal as long as it's supported by a reasonable basis. And there's a statement of reasonableness in your packet or it could adopt. So, this went before the planning board, they're meeting on July 6th. They recommended denial due to the inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan and future land use map that I mentioned. Their statement of consistency is attachment eye in your packet. And then staff also recommends denial due to the inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. As I mentioned, there's a statement of reasonable, reasonableness in the packet that council should adopt, no matter the decision. And then with any rezoning, there's also a statement of consistency, which council should also adopt. And again, the, the draft statements in your packet are just drafts prepared by staff, obviously, that can be modified if council has different items they want to consider. That's the summary of my report, I'm happy to take questions. And I know the applicant is here as well.
Michael, did you say that the planning board had made a recommendation on this?
Yes, they did. They recommended denial.
So, Michael, just again.
Yep. No, they, the property owner who's requesting the rezoning only owns 598 Miles View Drive, which is the single 15-acre tract. Not that I'm aware of, but I, I, you may want to ask them directly when they come up.
My property is light industrial, but I want to put my house on it. My primary residence is a no.
So, if there's an existing single-family home on the property and it's zoned light industrial, in this case, there are some allowances for expansion of the use to a limited extent. Obviously, repair of the existing structure, but in terms of further residential development of, uh, basically separated detached single-family homes, that wouldn't be permitted because that, uh, that use is not identified in the light industrial district.
Other questions before we open?
So, when was this property rezoned light industry? And when it was rezoned, was the current property owner notified?
I don't know when it was rezoned last, I just go off of the current zoning designation, so I don't have that information.
The other question I have, whether it's light industry or residential, is there access to the property for either one of them? So, Miles Road, their low Pepsi, the paved part, is that basically it's a one-lane road. So, whenever you go onto the gravel, to the gravel part, is that it's a single road. So, as you go down to this property, now, and so I've been down there. So, it peels off the Buster Brown's property. Y'all don't know Buster Brown, but anyway. So, this goes on down. So, whether it's light industry or residential, does the town have requirements for right-of-way, egress and ingress?
The town does, so with the subdivision of land or the development of land, there are frontage requirements depending upon the type of development that the land has to front a certain linear, number of linear feet of right-of-way. And then when we do subdivisions, there's also the requirement, again, depending upon what the property is used for, for a certain right-of-way width, whether that be a private easement or actually dedicated right-of-way. It could be either. And I've driven back there briefly and I put the signs basically at the end of the right-of-way, so I put one public notice sign at the end, at the end of the cul-de-sac. And then I looked at the Henderson County GIS to try and determine the right-of-way, if you look online, actually extends a little further, even though it's not paved. And so, the second sign I tried to place basically at the end of that right-of-way.
Mr. Parr, since you were the applicant, would you like to speak to us first?
Basically, we've decided that, um, we wanted to put the property up for sale. Um, and it's caused us, it's caused a hardship as far as selling the property because of the fact that you, so when I bought the property, there was an existing home there and a cottage. So, it's already residential as far as I'm concerned and, um, the, the person that owned it passed away, I was fortunate enough to get the property, but I'm not utilizing it the way that I think that someone else could. So, I've decided to put it up for sale and we've not had, we've had a lot of offers, um, if it was residential, but not, not commercial or light industrial. And for me, as far as the, the, the entrance, I don't believe it, it allows, Mike might know, but the doesn't, we don't have the right-of-way to even do light industrial. Because that's not our property coming in. Our property doesn't start till down the road. So, even coming in, we don't have, we couldn't do light industrial if we wanted to. And now that it's zoned light industrial, we can't do anything residential, so we can't. So, when I bought it, under the circumstances, we took the main house and we basically had the main house gutted because it was so old. And we had it refurbished, brand-new interiors, beautiful on the inside, but it's still an old house and we've got a cottage there. And so, the terrain in general is not, I don't think conducive to light industrial period. It's got a, it's got a creek that comes down from the other properties where the suburb neighborhood. Jason, who's the head of the fire department, um, he's renting the, the Brown property. So, I called him and explained to him what was going on. He said, he said, "I've discussed it with the Browns, the Browns 100% on your side, you do what you want to do." Mr. Gibbs next door on the other side has the 23 acres, he's actually interested in possibly following suit. He said he was going to be here, but I don't believe he's in. Oh, you're sitting right there, I didn't notice, I didn't see it from behind. But anyway, so, um, he might have something to say as well. And that's where I sit with it, be, um, we just, it's, um, I'm just trying to, uh, you know, and at this point, we haven't had an offer that's even reasonable or but if, even if I wanted to do something with the property myself and keep it, I don't, I still can't do anything. I can't, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't expand the house or build a new cottage in the back of the property or, you know, I can't do nothing with it, so that's where I'm at.
So, does, does your property start, is that where the forks are, the gravel part? Is that where you go to the Browns and yours goes on down?
No.
Is it, does your property start at the gate?
Yeah, the gate.
Okay.
Yeah. Starts down at the gate and the property on, you, he would know better than myself, but, uh, when you come in, there's a property to the, it would be on your right-hand side, that belongs to the people across the gut and up the hill. That piece belongs to them, I believe. And then the Browns is, obviously, you know where the Browns are. And then when you get down to our gate, that's where, where the fence is and the gate. Ponds, yeah. The ponds are on the property, yeah. So, the, the creeks actually form from two different directions right at the edge of our property. And then they flow into the top of the first pond. So, the two creeks are on the other property and they form right at the property line and then they go into the ponds. Thank you very much.
Okay, so there's our, for the rezoning, is there someone who wants to speak about, you know, oppose, opposition to the rezoning? Okay. If you'll introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, your honor, members of the council. My name is Michael Reeceman, I'm the Deputy Executive Director of the Asheville Regional Airport. I want to start off by just making it very clear that the Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority is never opposed to compatible land use and compatible development that improves the economic situation of any of the communities that the airport serves. The proposed rezoning, of course, as you're already aware and as was mentioned by Mr. Melchick, is in direct conflict with the recently adopted Mills River Comprehensive Plan. And I think, as you're aware, granting an exception so quickly sends the wrong message to the public after the significant effort that this town made to produce the document. The proposed rezoning, if approved, would immediately create a defined incompatible land use immediately adjacent to the Asheville Regional Airport, directly within a heavily used aircraft light pattern. There may not be a lot of aircraft directly flying over the property, but that property is well within the boundary of the primary traffic pattern for the airport. Under federal guidelines, incompatible land uses in proximity of public airports include residential schools, churches and hospitals. The airport, uh, if you're not aware, averages over 200 flight operations a day. That averages 75,000 flight operations a year. Either directly over or in very close proximity to this property, creating noise, vibration, dust and other potentially burdensome impacts. People staying at a B and B might think it's nice to see the airplanes fly by occasionally, but if you have to live under that traffic pattern 24/7/365, it's typically a different story. The presence of residential homes in this property, on this property will undoubtedly create a nuisance for those persons who may live there. Ultimately resulting in noise complaints and potential damage claims, not just to the airport, but to the authority responsible for creating the zoning that allowed it. The Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority, um, I'm sorry, and I might also add now, just what I'm, what I'm hearing as I sat back here a few minutes ago, the potential for another adjacent landowner to maybe try to follow suit if, uh, this, if this request is successful, potentially adds not just 15, but approximately 40 acres now of potentially incompatible land use immediately adjacent to airport property within the flight path. That creates increasing liability exposure, not just for the airport, but for this community as those nuisance lawsuits and claims may come about in the future because of the damages from aircraft noise. The Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority formally objects to this rezoning request on the grounds that it not only creates a highly incompatible land use adjacent to the airport, but also, but also based on the fact that it is non-compliant with the Mills River Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Alec Cantley?
Good evening. So, I am representing Mr. Parr. Uh, I've been marketing the property for the last 170 days or so. And as John covered, a lot of the highlights with, with our marketing efforts so far. You know, I think, I think at the end of the day, the zoning piece is, has really handicapped our ability to promote the property. We've had 20 showings, which, as everybody knows, in the last two years, the real estate market has been pretty darn good here. And we have, we've not until this week, uh, we finally received one offer, but all the offers and the feedback have really come down to the zoning piece. Got a lot of interest in it. But the problem is, nobody can expand, as you mentioned, they can't build a new house or, or expand upon what's there currently. We currently have, you know, as far as what's the recorded access to the property, I believe you were asking about that, so it's a 20-foot private right-of-way easement back to this property, which is not conducive for light industrial and it's not conducive for a subdivision. Not one person that's looked at this property has been a developer that's wanted to do anything remotely close to, you know, what we've got with some of those other properties like the Dairy Root Farms property. So, in my opinion, I don't think that's at all what we're looking at. I think what we're simply seeing is that there is a, there is a total hardship on Mr. Parr because he's not able to sell this property to somebody who would want to use it for a residential use. Obviously, the R30 use comes into play because you do have adjoining, uh, properties there with a subdivision that adjoins the corner of this property. And so, I think on top of those two points, the other piece to all this is the topography. You've got pretty steep topography and a big portion of this property that's in the floodplain. It's not conducive to being a residential development, but it is conducive to being a residence as it is currently. Which is a beautiful setting, nice view, French Broad Rivers right there. So furthermore, I think for the town of Mills River, you know, to send a message of, hey, we're not going to take our prime properties on the river and put big industrial plants like Amazon and Pepsi, which they certainly serve a purpose, they've been great for the community here. But they're also on tracts of land that are totally level and conducive to that use. So, I think at the end of the day, it, it makes a whole lot more sense for this property to be a residential use than what it is currently at light industrial.
What feedback have you heard from, um, landlookers about the airport and the airplane noise?
Airplane noise has not been a factor, I mean, we've had a couple, you know, there's always going to be a handful of clients that, that's not for them, but I'd say of the 20 showings we've had, there's probably three that have had negative feedback about the airport. Everybody else has been fine with it.
Sure.
If, uh, if you, if this property was rezoned residential, would you have desire or sign a acknowledgement that they realize the airport is there and they realize that airport, or would heard from this piece of property?
Yes, sir, we, unfortunately, in the day we live in, we have to do that with every property we sell just because of, of, you know, the legal obligation of that, but yes, sir, absolutely.
So, anybody that bought this piece of property for residential purpose would not be buying this, if digging the post or in the dark?
Correct, correct. I mean, we, and, and right down to the marketing of it, if you pull up the listing on the MLS, I had my photographer and my videographer take pictures of the planes coming in because we feel it's a feature. I mean, it's a pretty, it, you know, it's not for everybody, it's a, but it's a pretty cool part of this property, in my opinion.
That's all I have to say.
Okay. Brian?
Just out of curiosity, does Mr. Parr live here in Mills River?
Uh, he does not, he's a part-time resident.
Okay. Where's his full-time residence?
Uh, Virgin Islands, St. Louis. Originally from Nashville. Grew up and then, um, came back up to, did some business and ended up.
I see, thank you.
Other questions?
In, in the time that you've had the property on the market, have you made any price adjustments to that?
We, we've made one price adjustment, yes, we, we were originally listed at $1,450,000 and we're now listed at $1,350,000. And I'll add to that, just this week, we received an offer that was substantially under-asking and the comments there were, given the, given the limited usability of the zoning, that was what they were justifying with the, with their pricing.
So, out of the, out of the total 15 acres, how much land is actually built upon?
Currently?
Yeah, roughly. Is that, I know that there's a steep bank?
Yeah, so you, you currently have the main house, a guest house and a barn, that's the existing structure, so I would say maybe, maybe an acre and a half, two acres. And the whole lower portion there is all in the floodplain, I mean, with the two ponds, that, that limits it, the floodplain limits it. So, you've really only got a couple other additional possible home sites. But a lot of the comments and feedback have been, hey, we love this piece of property, we want to have a small farm, but we'd want to build a nice new house and nobody can do it. Thank you. Thank you.
And this is just a, in the case of, if someone wanted to move in and to construct a new home, would a conditional zoning, would this be a case where a conditional zoning could be used?
That's possible, but without the ordinance written or limitations, yeah, I couldn't answer, but
Okay.
Can, yeah, in, in theory, if the ordinance were written to allow residential conditional zonings and if 15 acres is above the threshold, we said, certainly.
Okay, so we recognize the folks that had signed up, is there additional public comments? If you'll step to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Irving Gibbs, I live right below on the map there. And I've lived there since 97. And to address the airplane issue, it's, they are off in the distance. They're not typically overhead. Unless there's a little tiny private plane and they kind of go over they want. The noise is not a big issue. I tell you what was a big issue, though, for noises. Number of years ago, they had an airboat. And now that was loud. That was completely crazy loud. So I support. Mr. Parr wants to rezone. I mean, I'm kind of in the same boat. I don't have any plans. I like to live there. I don't want a bunch of houses on my property. But, you know, I think you should have a right to use his property. And, you know, I'm not making a request, but I should also have that same sort of right. So I guess that's pretty much what I have to say.
Any other public comment? Right, discuss.
So whenever I start thinking about a decision like this, I think about why I found it was part of the region. And it always goes back to the rural characters. I always base all my thoughts and decisions on that one thing. And the closest thing to keeping a piece of property rural setting. Is the closest thing zoning-wise that we have is M R thirty. So in that reason, I would be much in favor of rezoning this M R thirty.
I do think there's some unique situations about this property that lend some certain things to that. First being the fact that it currently has a house on it. Obviously, it's not suited for industrial. It's just not set up for industrial use. And I know that, yes, in our comprehensive plan, we do have it outlined as that. But this property brings up certain, you know, if it's not suitable for building. So therefore, it's really restricting. It's an undue hardship. So I see that point. And those are unique specifications to this piece of parcel. That doesn't mean that the adjacent parcels are going to have those same exact, unique situations. So I think that's something that we definitely need to consider as well.
And besides, it only has the twenty-third right-of-way, is that correct?
Correct.
That's, I mean, there's no way that property could be used with just the twenty-third right-of-way for anything but residential. And very limited, though, residential effect.
Well, I take the work that our planning board does very seriously. And if they have recommended against this, I would also fall on the side of wanting to recommend against this. With that said, Brian brought up the topic of conditional zoning a few minutes ago. I think that that might be a reasonable way to approach this piece of property. So those are my thoughts.
One of the comments that I did not state earlier, but it was in the documentation in the letter that was written to Mr. Malicek. In response to this proposal, is that should this council. Make determination that it's appropriate to approve this request. It is strongly recommended, you know, that it be conditional upon the granting of an navigation easement to the Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority. The comment that was made by the council member previously about an acknowledgement. I live in Mills River. I work at the airport. I had to sign that acknowledgement, too. Everybody has to sign that acknowledgement regardless of their presence to the airport. That historically does not protect anybody from anything. That just means you knew you were moving in and that it was an airport in the region. Doesn't keep anybody from getting sued, doesn't give anybody from receiving complaints. The Navigation Easement is a document that's templated after federal guideline. Where the landowner is not just acknowledging, but the landowner is also granting. In this particular case, to the airport authority, the owner-operator of the airport, the right of flight in the airspace over and around the property. And the right to produce noise, dust, vibration, and all of the other burdens and impacts that come with being located near a public airport facility. That, again, does not necessarily keep somebody from suing everybody involved at a later date if they're annoyed by airplane noise. But it makes it a much harder case at a later date if that navigation easement were in place. The airport has successfully achieved and obtained these on other incompatible zone properties surrounding the airport over the last few years. This happens to be the first one that's coming through the town of Mills River. Should this, should this council determine in its wisdom to grant this? The request from the airport would be that it be conditional upon the granting of a standard navigation easement to the airport authority. Which not just protects the airport, but I believe truly will serve to protect this board as well in the future. Thank you.
So, so is that, I'm not here to protect the airport.
Understand that, sir.
Okay, so how far does the airport or the FFA, whoever, extend outside of their boundaries?
Ten thousand feet from the nearest point of, from the nearest point of the property to the nearest point of the runway, generally speaking, Mr. Snyder. There are federal regulations, federal regulation, federal aviation regulation, Part Seventy-Seven covers airspace hazards. And provides for overlay districts and provides for the overlays and the areas surrounding an airport that a community should be protecting. From incompatible land use around the airport.
So ten thousand feet, that's ten football fields.
Yes, sir.
So that includes Amazon.
Amazon is not an incompatible.
That includes Pepsi.
That is not an incompatible land use. Commercial. The taproot dairy is an incompatible land use that the airport opposed very aggressively. No, sir. It had to do with the nature of the incompatible land use. Residential uses this close to an airport are incompatible under federal guidelines. Pepsi. The federal guidelines do not distinguish between the number of incompatible uses. It just basically goes upon the uses. Common sense tells me, sir, that the town of Mills River, along with the airport, eventually going to get sued by about seven hundred people in the taproot dairy farm area. Technically, I'm sorry, my apologies. My apologies, Henderson County. My apologies, Henderson County. Henderson, Henderson County is going to be involved at some point in time with a lawsuit.
So, so the airport in some form or fashion can dictate what the town of Mills River. Which has nothing to do with the airport, Henderson County, and the town of Fletcher.
No, sir, that's incorrect. No, sir, that's incorrect. We cannot dictate that. Only you can dictate that. All we can do is we can make a recommendation to this council on what the appropriate action would be. In the hopes that you would take it upon yourselves to help protect the economic engine that the airport is for this community. I would remind you, and Mr. Snyder, I've been before you before in a meeting here. And I would remind you that the Asheville Regional Airport produces one point five billion dollars of economic impact in western North Carolina, which includes this community. Companies like, companies that you have welcomed, that you've opened your arms to welcome into this community. Including GF Lenimar, including Sierra Nevada, and others located here in large part because of the access through the airport. And no, we cannot dictate. Only you can dictate that.
I have a question for Mr. Cantley. The avocation easement, is that something you have talked about or you've ever done before?
I'll make a motion. We close public hearing.
I'll second.
Favor? Hi. Okay. Is there a motion? Is there a, we want to hold off? We want to explore other things? I like the idea of the conditional, but how long is that going to be? We don't tend to move fast. I don't put anybody at hardship, but while we're, while the wheels of government are slowly getting there. So, I mean, I think it's a good idea, though, to have. Randy has a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting the rezoning, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Brian and Brian opposed. One, two, three, one, two. Thank you, Mr. Parr.
So the next steps would be that this board still needs to adopt a statement of consistency with the adopted plans. I'll have to modify the language before it's signed. But you still need to at least enter into the record that you're stating that you're adopting a rezoning inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And then that automatically modifies our future land use maps of this property. Now that the rezoning is approved, will change on the future land use map to residential. There needs to be, you could either do it in one motion. I recommend doing the statements in two different motions. So one motion could be that the Mills River Town Council finds the proposed zoning map amendment is inconsistent with the following. With the making Mills River Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan. And that you adopt a statement of consistency saying such, and I'll draft that appropriately.
Okay, Sue, can I make a motion, what he said?
I'll make a motion to the first thing that he said.
Shay, you already made that motion.
If you know what it was.
Essentially, Mike, make sure I got this right. The council is adopting the consistency statement, saying that it's inconsistent with the Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan.
Correct.
We're consistent that it's inconsistent. Okay. Give a second. No, I already did. You didn't hear me. Second. All those in favor of adopting the statement, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Is that the only one you need, or is there another?
One more. So the next one, because this could be considered spot zoning, is the council has to show it's considered the reasonableness of the rezoning request. And so you need to adopt a statement of reasonableness. And I just asked that, basically, you're adopting a statement stating that Mills River Town Council finds the proposed zoning map amendment is reasonable. And in the public interest, it's your moving for approval.
Roger, make that motion. And I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye.
And I'll draft those modified documents for you later.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is to set the public hearing date for the text amendment, T X T twenty-one dash oh eight. Planning board size, set that date as October fourteenth, and I will make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor of the public hearing date, October fourteenth, say aye. Next item is the Lowe's Drainage Easement. Lowe's Drainage.
Yeah, that's me.
That's you again?
Yeah, sorry. So the Lowe's project at three, four, two Banner Farm Road is in a protected watershed. Since Henderson County is no longer providing watershed review services for the town, we've taken that over. In order for the project to close out and for the occupant to move into the building. The final step is basically the town accepting an easement that would allow someone like me to go in and inspect the property once a year. Not the property, but the stormwater control measure to make sure it's functioning. So that's what the easement is before you. And then it includes basically an inspection and maintenance agreement stating that the property owner agrees to maintain it per the operation and maintenance manual. This was forwarded to the town attorney for review. A couple minor comments were incorporated. And so the final version is what's before you today. That's all I have.
Motion? Motion, let me do it again. Somebody. All right, I'll make a motion that we.
authorize Mayor Davis to sign the easement.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept this Lowe's Drainage Easement and that I sign it. All those in favor? All right, moving along. Now to the bicycle, the bicycle pedestrian planning grant steering committee.
So this is a project we've talked about for the last couple of months. The town was awarded a bicycle and pedestrian planning grant by the North County Department of Transportation earlier this year. And one of the steps that we have to take to get that project started is establishment of a steering committee. Because this is a DOT-funded project, we have some guidelines within which we have to work to designate people for this steering committee. And so like this afternoon, I sent you an email with that list, which I've got here to pass out. And I welcome any feedback you might have. There are a couple of folks with whom I was not able to confirm whether or not they would be interested in serving. I'll just go ahead and put this out there. There's one category called major community representative. And our first thought internally was Jerry Britton, because we know that he's been in the community for a long time, obviously, knows a lot about the past. But I also had the thought this afternoon, Councilman Snyder, if you're interested, you've been on the board since the town incorporated. So I think that would be a unique perspective that really no one else can bring. We don't need decisions tonight. The state needs to look at this list and make sure that it covers all the categories appropriately. But I want to go and pass this out so you can review it and give us any feedback you might have. Can you just one second?
We set the meetings, or who sets the meeting schedule? What's the?
Okay, so if you look at this list, on the left-hand side, relevant planning staff, police representative, public works, and so on. Those are the categories that the state is asking us to make sure that we include in the steering committee. And so just starting from the top for planning staff, I put myself and Mr. Malicek. We don't have a public works department, so Nicole Sweat, Parks Recreation Director, is going to fill that role. Randy, you and I spoke about this a while back. As an avid cyclist, we need a board member on the board, so your name came to mind for that. It's a tentative, it's a tentative list, yeah. And then Stacy Taylor, who is on the Parks Recreation Advisory Committee, but she's also community health director. And that's really where we're pulling her expertise in, is her professional role in that. The Chamber of Commerce, Scott Moore from Henderson County Public Schools, also a resident in the town. We don't have a Y M C A or other sort of traditional community physical activity center. So that the Riveter is kind of the closest thing to that category that we could think of. List Elizabeth Jackson, who was also on the steering committee for the Mills River Comprehensive Plan. Jeff Young, lifelong resident here, active in the ag community. Not spoken with Joe Sanders. He's with the Blue Ridge Bicycle Club, and you remember that they were, they covered half of the town's contribution for that, for this project. And then the rest of them are basically. And then the rest of them are are basically Steve Williamson, DOT is required as the engineer, Tristan Winkler, the French Republic of River MPO. I've spoken with Mayor Davis about this, although she's the outgoing mayor, she could also represent the ag community. And then Tiffany Hill, bed and breakfast, we we thought from the tourism angle, and then the planning board, I've listed the chair. But I think the, if you're willing to accept the planning board as a member, that the board should appoint someone from themselves to to serve on that role, so. You're welcome to take action on this tonight and appoint these folks, or you can certainly just sit on this for a couple of days, give us some feedback, and we can bring it back in October for for an actual vote.
Is is there a need to appoint this committee to that, or is it, can we, can we think about?
Yeah, you can think about it.
Okay.
Some of the.
That's right.
Yeah, so let's, I'm okay with sitting on it. No, I'll just sit on it. Okay. So you're good. We don't need action.
No, no, I'm just requesting feedback over the next couple of weeks so we can I can contact people in time to get them ready for the October fourteenth meeting. But no action. Let me, let me answer your question. A moment ago, you asked about scheduling the meetings. So part of this this relationship that we've entered into with the state, the contract. Is this, it's the state is funding the project and they're paying a consultant. The consultant is doing the work on behalf of the town of Mills River. We didn't select the consultant, although we did let them know our preference. And we, the one that we had requested. Transportation, planning and design out of Asheville has done many of the plans around the they were in jurisdictions. And the folks that work there are, a lot of them are from Western North Carolina and very active in the riding and pedestrian communities. So we're very excited about that. So basically, once the steering committee is approved by the state and this board, the consultant will work with us to get the meeting scheduled. For this hearing committee, there'll be four meetings with them, and then there'll be two public meetings outside of regular council meetings in the early part of twenty twenty-two. With the goal of having this thing wrapped up and adopted by by the end of fiscal year next spring.
All right, so something to think about. Okay, two staff updates. Sue, do you have updates from the finance and clerk department?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
Harley.
You'll see your twenty twenty-one property tax collection report. This is as of August thirty-first. The bills had, were sent out on the twentieth of August, so in eleven days, we collected one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. We have substantially more than that now. More than. Double that, yeah. We've had tax payments come in by mail. We've had tax payments in our Dropbox, paid by credit card online. Paid by credit card in our office kiosk, which is a month old, Marvin, our our computer. And we're off to a pretty good start this year. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Harley.
I got one quick question. On the collecting, collection percentage for twenty twenty, was it nine point nine four? And at twenty-one, it's at five point eight eight? Do you think that's pretty much due to the fact that the tax bills got sent out so late compared to?
The tax bills were actually sent out just ten days later than than last year, but yeah, we usually, like, there are, there's a huge chunk of people. That as soon as they get their tax bills, they turn around and pay them. We've we've been scrambling for, what, three weeks, two weeks? To get to get back in the groove, but yeah, that to me is is the only difference. We're we're well above ten percent as of today.
Thanks, Arlene. And Michael, anything else from zoning?
Uh, just a few. Our current residential developments keep building out. I was at cottages at Hayes Mill the other day, and they have eight homes under construction there. Mills River Crossing South keeps going forward. They've got a number of homes under construction. The zoning permit application, sorry, I received a zoning permit application for a new hundred and twenty thousand square foot warehouse in Broad Point Industrial Park at the corner of Old Banning Bridge in Broad Point Drive. And then just wanted to report that the party partners development received final approval from the planning board for the commercial subdivision and their development site plan. So getting those approvals out to them as soon as possible, so I know they're itching to break ground. And then the planning board, they also recommended approval of both text amendments that were before them, twenty-one oh seven, which was the. Limiting the property owner text amendment process. And then twenty-one away, which was the planning board size.
All right, and Daniel?
Uh, just a few things. We are working on the development of the website, and we have a. We have a rough draft available right now. It's got nothing on it. We want to polish that up a little bit, and then we'll share it with the rest of the group so you can give some feedback on it. But one of the things that we're working on now, in fact, over the next couple of weeks, is migrating content from the existing website over to the new website. So if there's anything in particular that you think needs to be included on the new website. Now is the time to to get us that information so we can begin to incorporate it. You know, the the plan is to get the website live. And available to the public before Christmas this year. So we're we're going to be working pretty pretty steadily throughout the month of October to get it all filled out with all the information. So if there's a feature you're looking for, or if you want information on a specific community advocacy group or something to that effect, that you think should be listed on there. Send those to me so that we can, we can work internally to get information gathered and populate the website with those. And then the walking trail, you guys are aware, sustained some damage during tropical storm Fred, and it's it's been repaired. Tempor- permanently temporarily repaired. Where we've gone as far as we're going to go at this point with it until the stream bank project is done. And then we'll get it repaved again, so it'll all be cleaned up and ready to go, and the gravel for the parking lot should be in any day now, back down by the river, so we can get that regraded. A lot of that got washed away. I do believe that is all that I have for you this evening.
Okay.
I have one other thing. The 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 easement that you authorized the mayor to sign tonight, that's going to become a routine. Business procedure when we're reviewing permits and closing out projects. So if the board is willing, I would request that you'd authorize the town manager to sign those easements, accepting them, so that we don't have to. Basically wait for a council meeting to occur and hold hold folks up. So if that's something the council has an appetite for, we we did draft the resolution authorizing that. So I do have that request for you this evening.
This, this is basically stating. Like mentioned earlier in the evening, this is something that.
I don't have a problem with it. It seems, yeah, seems this is a cleaner and quicker way to do it.
Yeah, this is very narrowly tailored tailored to just water shed and stormwater stuff. It's not easements for anything else.
You guys have issue? I'll make a motion. We adopt the resolution to authorize the town manager to sign watershed stormwater easements and inspection and maintenance agreements.
And I will second.
Others in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, council comments. If you play this right, we can get out in under an hour.
I make a motion, you're adjourned.
Second. Others in favor? Aye. Okay. Thanks, Randy. Have a good trip. Challenge.